Stanford pledge, call meeting to order. Okay, at this time, we will do the AOK Awards. There was a confusion on my end of it, so we're gonna do it this month for... But it's supposed to be next month, so that's on me. I take the blame for everything. So at this time, I turn it over to Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Halli. So this AOK Award is for Lucas Ryman, a sixth grader here at GRM. And one of the things that Lucas does for us as a school every morning is, his mother, who works in the building, he comes in very early, so he's gotta be independent, he's gotta be responsible, right? He makes sure that my lobby is always clean and ready to go. For our sixth graders that are now allowed to eat breakfast in the lobby and not in the cafeteria, and that's a sixth grade privilege that we've initiated this year. And Lucas is always there and available to help with his mom's class as well, at the end of the day, with those precares. And I've seen him at some girls' basketball practices as well. So for that, Lucas, we wanted to give you the AOK Awards, so come on up, bud. Thanks, Lucas. Thanks, guys.
Okay, this way, you don't have to come back next month, Lucas. You guys wanna go home, go on home, or you wanna stay and be bored? Okay, so we have a public hearing. A repair reserve for the fund, public hearing presentation. Let me read it. "The Elder Junior-Senior High School operates its heat using three boiler systems. During a storm in January, one panel shorted out and will need to be replaced. This leaves us with two operating boilers, putting strain on the system and leaving us at risk of school closures if another goes down. The cost to repair just the interoperable boiler is approximately $17,500. The panel being replaced is obsolete and would leave the other two boilers with older obsolete panels that won't work as efficient as they would all using the same system. We intend to use the repaired reserve fund to replace the panels on all three boilers, which will also increase our efficiency by 15% and up to 20%. At cost of repair approximately $52,500 and annual savings of between $7,500 and $10,000 per year in fuel. We would pay ourselves back in five twenty-five-seven years." Five, what's that?
Five and a quarter.
Five and a quarter, seven years. So at this time, I'll let Caleb.
That's, that's...
That's it?
You nailed it, that's it, yeah. Unless anybody's got any questions, then...
Any questions on that from anybody? At this time, I'll take a vote. Stacy?
Aye.
Amador?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Yes, aye. That's done. At this time, has everybody had a chance to look at the calendar? School calendar, we all good with it? You go with it? I'll take a vote on it. Stacy?
Can I just interrupt you one second? I, this was the first time I saw it, and I just needed to go back before you approve it and go back again. On November twenty, the November 2024 dates, when I'm adding up student days and staff days, it doesn't look like they're equal in the, in the calendar. And that was, that's the only thing that I saw when I was adding dates. Maybe one of the conference days was added, so therefore...
So there's seventeen staff days, and there should be fifteen student days.
Right, so that would change your calculation at the bottom.
Okay.
Okay.
Twenty-two. Okay.
You good with that? Any other discussion? All good? Take your vote, Stacy.
Are we voting on this today?
Discussion.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, then yes.
Amador?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Nancy?
I'm a yes.
Okay. We'll move on to the regular meeting now, superintendent's report. All right, am I right? Yeah.
Okay. So on January sixteenth, Governor Hochul issued her proposed executive budget. Now, in that proposed executive budget, it is where she worked out her own little foundation aid formula. With that, it was a 15.8% decrease in our foundation aid. And it's based on pupil land-wealth ratio. So what that means is, the 15.8% decrease, it looks like, and we've, and I'll back up a little bit. So historically, all districts, because of dealing with enrollment kind of being fluid and going up and down, that they have a hold harmless rule, which basically says all school districts across the state would get a 3%, or really a 2.99% increase every year. And that was the hold harmless. She has removed that hold harmless, and it is where the foundation aid is truly saying pupil ratio versus, and your wealth. So that is $619,000 less this year, and that's a 50% transition. So that would also mean next year is a possible $619,000 decrease. So a $1.2 million decrease over the next two years. With that, if we are, and I'll just need to make this clear, if this goes forward, then in order to keep everything the way it is right now, to keep everything the same, to sustain, we would need to do between our, the tax cap and then need to offset this cut in funding, we would need about a 9.1% tax levy. That is just to bring us back up to the tax cap, bring us, and then bring us to sustain, so nothing is cut. Now, this is a proposed, it's just proposed budget. Yesterday, Stacy, Scott, Caleb, and I spent the day in Albany, 'cause it was lobby day for NISBA. So we met with Aileen Gunther and Carl Brabinek. And both of them said they are doing everything they can to restore. Forty-three percent of the schools across the state are having these cuts. And so they are both on the same page as far as restoring the hold harmless. Not giving us an increase, but restoring that hold harmless, that 2.9% kind of buffer there. They both agreed with it, they, but there's no guarantee that it's gonna go through. There's also a question raised about if a balanced budget or a state budget would be passed by April 1st, they would not guarantee that. So that means we have to assume that these cuts happen. We have to build a budget based on these cuts. It's very important that we have the budget workshop next week and that we have, and so Caleb will be doing a lot of his budget presentation next week, 'cause it's looking at three different budgets.
And I will probably provide, but with names redacted, just so that on the administrative level, I've given each budget line what's in it, who gets paid. I'll take names out, but there'll be salaries, there'll be exact software we buy, 'cause we, we'll really need to sharpen our pencils and kind of look and say, do we need this, do we not need that, things like that. So it'll be, that's the reason for the budget workshop, is we can get a little more detailed than what you would normally get.
So now, along with the proposed budget cuts, and you know, you're gonna see in the newspaper how she is fully funding foundation aid, she's increased the amount of money going into foundation aid. That is true, but it's where she has taken the money from forty-three percent of the schools across New York State and given them to other schools. So it, you know, it's all about messaging. Along with the budget proposal, within that budget proposal, they are talking about instituting science of reading, which is five pillars, it's a framework regarding reading instruction. So the state ed department is planning on developing best practices, and that, and we've talked about it a lot with the superintendent, schools must align curriculum with these best practices by September 1st, 2025. They think that will end up passing through the state. Along with that, FAFSA completion. And if you've had seniors, juniors, and seniors, Angie probably knows all about FAFSA. And that is part of the proposed budget, where it would be that schools, requirement of all schools to ensure seniors complete the FAFSA, beginning next year, the 24-25 school year, there will be ways that students above the age of eighteen can waive that requirement, and parents can waive the requirement. Because if you're going into the armed forces or you're going directly to work, the FAFSA doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So there, you know, but we are waiting on that. You know, I do wanna talk about, we, we did lobby day yesterday, the capital bond project update. We also brought this up yesterday to Assemblyman Brabinek, because we did our pre-bid walkthrough finally, the fourth Tuesday, that we finally were able to without snow, last week. So then that means that our opening date for bids will be February 29th. Now, that should align with the NICID approval. When we put in our, all of our stuff for our capital bond project, when we put it into, submitted it to the state ed department, at that time, it was a fourteen-to-sixteen week waiting period. Well, we have blown past that, they still have not given it to us, 'cause now they've updated and said it is now a twenty-two-to-24 week waiting period. So the February 29th is at the end of that 24-week waiting period. The last time I looked, we are in the queue to get approval, to comments and approval. So I, I am optimistic that we will get approval. If we don't have approval, we cannot do the permits. We can't do the bids, that's prohibited by law. So we might have to extend it. This was brought up to the assemblymen, because there are several school districts that have had to postpone capital bond projects because of SED slowing down the process. Along with a 24-week window waiting period, it's the same thing if, with teacher certification. So teachers now are waiting for certification, they're having to wait six months. So the SED is running very, very slow. We did take a bus, I called it my field trip. We took a field trip to the Monticello Bus Garage, 'cause we are looking, you know, again, thinking forward with the EV buses. We did take a trip to Monticello. We gained a lot of knowledge on kind of what mistakes were made. Melissa went with us, Dave Shabel, Michael Campbell, so there was a whole group that went with us. And just to decide, what do we need if we choose to go down a bus garage route? You know, that's if we choose to do this. The good side, we did find out from yesterday's trip, I thought it was important, Representative Brabinek, or Assemblyman Brabinek, he actually put together a bill, he's on it. It is the Assembly Bill 8447, and that is where he is proposing to move that EV deadline from 2032 to 2045, with the caveat that if schools have to do it, then all state agencies have to do it. So that means Department of Public Works, though, you know, I'd like to see an electric...
Snowplow.
Snowplow.
I like that garbage.
So in that bill, it says, you know, don't just put it on schools, every state agency has to do it, so that... So again, if anybody wants to contact Carl Brabinek, he does cover Deer Park for us, so he is part of our district, or we're part of his district.
Thirty-nine park.
Support that bill. I reached out to Aileen Gunther in her office, requesting discretionary funds from their office to use for possibly security vestibule, flooring along the cafeteria hallway, did reach out to her. I haven't heard anything, that could take up to 12 months to get that. We did receive a grant from NYSER for $1,000, so each school, McKenzie and Junior-Senior High School, has $500 to do with it. You know, I'm thinking graduation costs, you know, things, yep, moving up ceremony, at least we can defray some of those costs. And then also in the agenda that I have is Dave Shabel's retirement, so I just wanna say congratulations to Dave Shabel on his retirement. I think that's April 22nd. You know, he has worked for us for a very long time, and so I, I kind of, I'm envious. As we're looking at EV buses, I am envious. So that, I think that's it for my report.
I learned something yesterday, I thought it was kind of funny. So Long Island decided to drive an electric bus to Albany and ended up going home on a hook, it was dead, and they had no way to charge it. Is that what they said?
And, and the worst part of it was it was a publicity tour.
Right.
Like, public, so how great this is.
Yeah, how wonderful this is, so they ended up going home on a hook.
Yeah, no, it was not planned.
So I thought that was kind of comical. All right, any, any questions or any, okay, very good. Moving on to elementary, what's your report? Mr. Carpenter?
Yep, so we're still on track to our attendance goal, 95.5% versus Kirk is sitting at exactly 93% right now, which is great. Our enrollment went up since the last time we met. We have two more students who are current enrollment at GRM, it's 226 students. Leader and Me, we're continuing to develop ideas through our committee team members, who had some, a coaching day today with our Leader and Me coach. And that's allowed us to start to develop some ideas on how to make sure we're initiating that framework in all the initiatives that we have at our school, which is, which is a big next step for us. We had a site visit with Livingston Manor, we came to visit GRM in our MTSS process, programs that we had. And it was requested by Livingston Manor as they start to develop their own MTSS process. And it was really great to be able to discuss our process and what we've done over the last three years since I've been there, to improve student success, all right? Especially those students that are struggling with writers. Units of study, our writers workshop, we had planning days at the end of the month, on the 27th, 27th, 4th, 8th, with our, our, our coach, Linda Zach Mary. And she'll also provide professional development on our conference day on Monday, on the powers of pattern, I'm sorry, the patterns of power, pop. And that's a grammar piece that goes with the writers workshop. In literacy, in discussing with Superintendent Ferrer, talked about earlier, about the science of reading. Many teachers in the building are receiving a micro credential from SUNY New Paltz on the science of reading. I will be receiving it as well. It's online courses that you take through SUNY New Paltz from now until about June, and there's different modules for it. So a lot of the teachers have jumped on that, which is great. Our literacy coordinator, Ms. McKevich, has come up with numbers, significant, great ideas to improve our literacy outcomes in, in GRM. We've already started to discuss what our 90-minute blocks of ELA are going to look like and how we can help teachers plan for that, 'cause 90 minutes is a long time to go to elementary school with the same kids. But it's important that we have that 90-minute block for literacy every single day. Observations, all non-tenure teacher formal observations are complete, and pre-K kindergarten registration is now occurring and will occur in March. Done a lot of good feedback right now, we, we were up to between 20 and 25 students for pre-K next year, which is a significant increase from the 14 that we had this year. So that's a very good thing, yes. So that's, formal registrations complete yet, 'cause that'll be done the second week of March, but that's a really good sign. And I'm projecting that next year are our four-year-olds that were born during the pandemic. So we probably will see a little bit of an increase based on people just having to be home.
And not having anything to do.
Very well said, Mr. Carpenter. I like that. I need, I need to take a class from you, very well said.
Yeah, you do.
Our winter clubs end next week. And our makeup will be after the break. Our Odyssey, the My teams, both of them, we have two teams in Division One, I'm sorry, Division Two. They will compete at OU Bozey's on March 2nd. We're really excited, we have a third grade team and a fifth grade team. I'm really excited to see them compete. Our PTA is now supporting a basketball clinic on Saturdays, for the next four or five Saturdays in the month of February. I want to thank the business office and technology office, so we can make sure that they have access to the building and everything they need to PTA to be there. And that's a big win. And we have our Old Academy Music Festival on March 1st and 2nd coming up, which I know, I think, Mr. Babison emailed you guys today about some of the great things he's doing as well. We have students as well that are gonna participate. So, put it out for me, that's all I have.
So the double in pre-K is really good.
Yeah.
Yep, and the basketball thing is very good. That was here years ago, and time strengths and everybody trying to be involved, it just kind of went away, but I'm very happy to see it come back. I'm very happy.
Evan Ball, Evan Ball.
Yep, yep.
About this, it's about February, it's about September, and then they look for you at the PTA, 'cause we need somebody in here to sponsor to use the gym, the PTA is up.
Well, I'm glad you did that, because if you remember correctly, you go back to the minutes, I brought it up last year about this time, about doing a Saturday league. And my fault on me, I didn't follow through with it, but I'm so glad you did, though. Thank you for that. Any other discussion, any questions for Mr. Carpenter? Moving on, big guy, Mr. Carpenter.
Very much, I, Mr. Carpenter, I just, I have to ask, how is the Taylor Swift club going?
It's wonderful. So they're actually, they're gonna do Taylor Swift Bingo tomorrow.
Okay.
It's the best movie of the club.
All right.
I also recommend it, if you discuss her itinerary, make it to the Super Bowl, be able to...
I was gonna say, yeah.
To Las Vegas, then to Australia for another concert.
Wow, okay.
I see that would be a nice little thing, you know, kind of, even a little geography.
Wow. That's a rough date. I think the 49ers have a great opportunity to come out to a Taylor Swift song this weekend, so... I hope to see that, I don't know.
It's a great club.
But, uh, thank you, I'll go through my report now. January regents took place, you know, January, I forget the dates, but we sent them out to Sullivan County Bozey's, and they were graded by a company called Premier that we used in the summer. We received them back in a very timely manner. I'm actually in discussion with my ed council now. Are we gonna send them out in June as well? I don't know what they're gonna say. But the good news is, we had some students pass exams that they really needed to move on in their educational program and also needed for graduation. So, you know, we're still, it was good. So regents was a success, and I'm happy with that, so... The end of the second marking period, the first semester, was January 26th. Report cards were published on January 30th, 2024. We are also, to tie into that, we're having our second student recognition assembly, which will be on Friday, February 16th, right before the break. That'll be the end of the school day. So this is just for the second marking period, but it's also for courses that were just half-year courses as well. And this, I should mention, I don't know if I mentioned this before, but this ties into our Leader and Me as well, because this was a idea by the Leader and Me Subcommittee, the culture team, building, you know, school culture and stuff, so it's a very good event. We, you know, they're gonna sit by grade level this time, but it happens right here in the gym. And we also give out, not just the principals list, high honor roll, honor roll, we give out like a shining star award. So maybe a student who hasn't received those awards in the past is really excelling and really putting an effort forward. So we do a shining star award for each subject area in middle school and high school. So it's a really good time, and it's the Friday before break, so it's perfect timing. We recently submitted an application, well, we did submit it, and then they sent it back again, Mrs. Ferrer, I don't know if you know that, to Sullivan 180 for a competition grant. So we're trying to do a composting initiative here at the junior-senior high school, and Kelly Pratchler has been instrumental in that. They're working with us very well, although they keep sending it back with suggestions, and we keep putting it back to them. But basically what it's gonna be is a waste reduction project to reduce the food, paper, and plastic waste going into the landfill. The plan is to separate the food waste, paper waste, and plastic waste, and analyze the amount produced by the school. So our goal is ultimately out there to kind of create a compost. And this actually came up at a faculty meeting, what about the bears? But I heard if you, if you do it right, bears don't touch compost pile. So that's, that's what I'm hearing, yeah. So, yeah, so we're hoping for that. I hope not, right? 'Cause we had a bear in our dumpster earlier this year, so... But that's, that's moving along, we're gonna be called the Waste Warriors. Hashtag Waste Warriors, and we lay it on thick, is gonna be our slogan, so...
The bears eat it, that's a win-win, no?
That's true, that's true, yeah. And it's worth $10,000 over two years, so five grand each year, so... Yeah, so we're hoping, it's looking really good, they just have to accept it, so... Course selection meetings took place with all department coordinators. This was to assist with the planning and creating of the master schedule, obviously. And Ms. Garen is going to be going into classes and meeting with students individually to kind of go over their course selection sheet, and it kind of puts it in front of them and says, well, this is what you have to take. What electives would you like to take? So really student choices, what we wanna move towards, so looking forward to that. And then since we started the second semester, and February's almost over, I feel like, 'cause it's, you know, it's going so fast, we, we're planning for graduation now. So it'd be right around the corner in no time. And we have many fun events planned, the seniors will be going to Rohebith Beach in Delaware for their senior trip, so it should be fun. So that's it for me.
Any questions or any discussion? Thanks for letting us know that our life's passing right by us, Mike. And bears are garbage hounds, so...
I think it's a win-win. I'm just saying.
I have teachers that do it at home, and the bears don't touch it, so, I mean, I hope so.
Well, look, they get it out of the garbage anyway, so, I don't, I don't know.
Mr. Krebs?
If they're hungry, they're gonna get it.
Director of... Oh, I'm sorry, my bad. You're up, my bad, sorry.
I'm gonna start with the National Jitter Honor Society and the National Honor Society, because they've been doing a lot this month. They're hosting a blood drive next Thursday, February 15th, and encourage anyone who can and is willing to donate to do so. They're also selling candy grams in school outside the cafeteria for Valentine's Day. In addition to that, they're providing community service opportunities for all students and National Honor Society students, such as like helping in PTA meetings, watching the kids, making sure everything runs smoothly. And they've also donated proceeds to Toys for Tots. In other news, we have a prom date. Prom will be held on May 4th, 2024, through 6:30 to 10:30 at the Riverview Inn in Matamoros. The Elder Performing Arts Club will be performing Annie Junior on March 22nd and 23rd at the Junior-Senior High School. And the show will include both the elementary school and the junior-senior high school. And as someone who is in this production, it's very exciting, and I look forward to everyone seeing it. Spring sports signups are emailed to all students in the junior-senior high school, and students are encouraged to sign up as soon as possible if they'd like to participate in sport, just so we can get all the numbers down and everything all on track. And that's all I have.
Thank you, any questions or any...
Yeah, when is the play?
March 22nd and 23rd.
It's like kind of that window with, with just sports and spring sports, so it's perfectly good.
Any other discussion? Thank you. Mr. Krebs?
All right, thank you, Mr. Halli. Upcoming this next Monday, we don't have school for students, but we do have school for staff. We have our conference day that's taking place. We have a number of activities that are taking place that day. Along those same lines, staff and parents were sent information about our rooms, training. So out on social media now, any parent can now get in touch with a teacher using the app on their phone, where they just can look up a classroom, click, and immediately can communicate with the teacher in the classrooms. That's going through App to G, which is our online platform that we use. Also, I'm working with the principals to set up visitations to other schools through programs and supports. We recently had two of our staff members at the elementary school that went to Sullivan West to see their K-5 literacy program. So part of our visitations is to look at what other schools are doing and how we can improve ourselves here in Elbridge. So, and they have proved very beneficial across all lines. Tracy's been out, I've been out, we've had a number of teachers that have gone, viewed other schools, and they're coming back, and we're starting to change some of the things we're doing here in line with what they're seeing or working at other school districts. We had a PD at vocabulary, vocabulary is a vocabulary program that's typically used in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. That, they've been using that this year, and this was a follow-up training that the teachers would give, and it was about an hour in length. So any of their questions that they had, or any areas that they might kind of been using fully in the program, now they can use it. Renaissance Army is another program that's out there that we use for progress monitoring. Each year, we do benchmarking three times a year to see where our students are in literacy and in math. And along those lines, when students need added support, we have another program that is used through Renaissance that provides progress monitoring toward their goals, so the teachers can see if what they're doing in the classroom is actually working with students. And lastly, we've been, as, as Tracy had mentioned, about the issue, the initiatives with the state on literacy and how their importance that they're putting that as a goal for the state going forward, and what that will look like in districts into 24-25 school year. Right now, they're pretty much saying that, in our initial literacy briefs that went out, that the impact for schools will be another certification process that they'll have to sign off on providing high-quality professional development for the students and the teachers in the areas of literacy. And we're focused on growth in those areas, because what they found out in the state is that they're indicating that so many kids by third or fourth grade are not reading at grade level. So they're attempting to make this an initiative across the state, and we've not only heard it from the governor, but curriculum coordinators, school districts, outside consultants, they're all using the science of reading term. And just very quickly, the science of reading is not a program. So it's not, you can go sign up for a Pearson product or a whole Mifflin product and put that in place. It's pretty much talking about how you teach the pillars of literacy. Okay, that's all I have to share with you this evening.
Thank you, any questions, any discussions?
Room, is that you're talking about?
Yeah.
Mostly just for during the day, and, you know...
No, they can use it. It's online. They can just, yeah, it goes right directly to their phone. They go onto the app, and they can just send a message.
It's the same thing as like a thing, it's, it's another avenue of communication. So they could still send an email
Yeah.
to a teacher, but, you know, it, this is another just avenue of communication.
Well, good.
Good.
Caleb, you're up, big guy.
Okay. Well, I'm keeping in mind relatively short, because we're gonna have a much bigger one next week, but the tax cap right now is four point two eight percent. What changed last time, because I told you, three point nine in between there, is part of the state aid runs, part of the tax cap calculation is your total capital projects money minus the amount you're gonna get in state aid for capital projects. That number is lower than what was originally anticipated. So when she released that, I changed the numbers. Basically, what's happening is our transportation aid is going down. That's gonna go down no matter what. It's going down from thirty-six percent down to almost thirty-one percent. And so that five percent of our bus lease, which is three hundred grand, is like, so that extra fifteen thousand dollars got added to our tax cap. Same thing on the building aid. We lost a little bit of building aid, and that's part of the tax cap formula. So that's what changed there. And there's still one more piece of information that's not in yet. Last year, Bosse's gave it to me on the ninth, so we get to, part of our exclusion is our portion of Bosse's capital projects. And we're a smaller school, so it's smaller. Like last year, it was seventy-one thousand, so this isn't gonna change a whole lot. And the change is the difference between last year and this year. So last year was seventy-one. If they tell me this year it's eighty, our tax cap goes up nine thousand bucks. If they tell me it's sixty-five, it goes down six thousand bucks. It's not a big number, so you're not gonna be looking at, you know, even a half a percent. It could go up maybe point one or go down point one. This is more or less where we're gonna be at for our tax cap. As Tracy said, the governor's proposing six hundred and, I had twelve thousand, but that was a rough estimate. And it's actually gonna be closer to seven hundred and twenty-nine, because we're not gonna get the three percent either. So it's a six-twelve cut from what we got this year, and then I also don't get my hundred and change that I normally get on top of that. And she wants to do that two years in a row, is the implication, because the cut is, is the one point two, and then she put a line in there that said transition adjustment, which implies that this is a transition into the actual formula. Stacy and Scott were with us. They feel very, very, very strongly, short of guaranteeing that this is gonna get held flat, but that is the message she's sending. So you could see it every year via proposal, who knows? We're just gonna have to sharpen our pencils a little bit and, and kind of come in there, and I'll, I'm gonna prepare the budget three ways for you guys. I'm gonna do it with the cuts, I'm gonna do it with the tax increase, and then I'm gonna do it as if, you know, they restore it and it's business as usual. So I'll do it all three ways, so no matter what happens, we have it kind of prepared. But you guys will have to have a discussion about what things are like top priorities, like, don't touch that. It's a nonstarter. We don't think from our conversation that in year one, we have to touch anything programmatic, meaning like getting rid of teachers or anything like that. So we don't think we'd have to touch any of that, one way or another. The Comptroller released their fiscal stress score. I think I mentioned this before, we have three point three three points now. The reason for that is that we're now compliant with the four percent limit. We have three point nine something percent in our fund balance. The Comptroller suggests that you have one twelfth of next year's budget. Four percent is one twenty-fifth of next year's budget. So the Comptroller says you should have one twelfth, and N I C E D says you can't have more than one twenty-fifth. And so you have to choose whether you wanna comply with the N I C E D four percent or whether you wanna have a zero score. So if you guys want a zero score, I could get you a zero score again, but then we'll be over the four percent, because the only way to do it is to get to eight. That's up to you. But three point three three, by the way, denotes no fiscal stress. It's still a no-stress score. But that's why we have it. And if you want it, I could get rid of it. We're quest, we already did this at the hearing, but we're looking to repair the boilers. So the fifteen percent increase in efficiency is what the vendor is selling. However, Dean from Bosse's just put this system into Livingston Manor, and he said they're actually at about twenty-three percent is what he calculated increased efficiency, decreased fuel costs by about twenty-three percent in Livingston Manor. The company's not gonna tell you that, because that's a little bold, and they won't maybe be able to live up to it. But that's why I did the fifteen to twenty. The company says fifteen, but Dean is saying that in actual practice in this area, he's seen it at twenty-three percent. Also, this is very recent, so it wasn't on here. One of our, one of the things that came off recently was an energy performance contract. I'm in the very preliminary stages of just getting some information about what a new energy performance contract would look like. That's usually a net zero or even a savings. And if that's the case, you move forward with it. So, but it would have to be voter-approved if we did do it. Very preliminary. I mean, I just had like our first real conversation about it this morning. But we are looking into that. And what that would be is they come in, you go out to a contract over X amount of months, and they have to lower your energy costs by whatever the amount that that cost is or more. So we're looking into that. I'll give you more information if that's something that's feasible.
Good.
And that's what I've got for right now, yeah.
Any questions?
Next week, I'll have a lot more.
For Caleb? Discussion? Thank you. Couple things on my end. After last meeting, there was some confusions, I guess maybe on my part, I don't know, I'll take responsibility, about, some people thought that it was my idea or the board's idea to go with electric buses and everything like that. I got phone calls for that. Have you ever read the paper? I didn't see anywhere where it said it came out of Albany, to my knowledge.
Out of the paper.
So some people had taken that out of context, stating that it was me that wanted to get ahead of the, you know, get ahead? No, X, N, A, wrong. Absolutely not. This has nothing to do with this board. This is strictly out of Albany. This is where all this is coming from. So they wanna cut our state aid at six hundred thousand dollars this year and six hundred thousand dollars next year, and yet they want us to do three million dollars' worth of infrastructure and a school bus garage and buy a four hundred and twenty thousand dollar school bus.
Four fifty.
It doesn't add up. I'm sorry, it just, it doesn't add up. And leaving Albany yesterday, I'm with Tracy and Caleb and Stacy, I feel pretty confident this is gonna get rectified. Is it definitely gonna? No, but I feel confident that it will. But I just wanted to make sure it was clear that this wasn't our idea to spend millions of dollars. Was that's not on us. On a good note, we did get an email from the music department, and Stacy's gonna elaborate on it, but thank you, Kristen, for responding to the email. But I think it's a great thing from a small school. They're doing wonders. Brian's doing a great job with them, and that was awesome news. And I'd also like to say that the girls' basketball varsity team made, are section nine and division champs. They will be moving on to the finals, finals up in, I'm not gonna say where, because that's all over the place, too. I believe it's in Troy, but I don't know. The seed doesn't go until the twenty-second. And elaborate just one, one last thing. We, on our way back from our field trip last week to the school bus garage in Monticello, we stopped by the Lumberland Town Shop, just to get a feel, just to let everybody put eyes on, I mean, I've been in them a hundred times, thousands of times, but I wanted just to get a feel of how they were set up. I know Missy's been there several times, I'm sure. So are we looking to build something that extravagant? No, but the floor plant, plant would work out for the maintenance department, definitely the bus garage, and some nice office space. So we, we did take a look at that. That is all I have to say. Would you like to comment on the...
Sure. So Mr. Neivison attended with ten of our students who were invited to, last Saturday, and Friday and Saturday, to attend the Marywood University Senior High Honor Band Festival. It is a prestigious thing. There are schools that are all around Pennsylvania that participate in this every year. The only two schools from New York State that were invited to this was us and Port Jervis. Speaking from my own personal experience of twenty-five years ago, I can tell you it is a very grueling audition process that they go through. And once they are placed and chosen into their individual seats within the program, they actually have to learn sight reading on the fly, and, and it's, it's pretty intense, an intense couple of days. So we wanted to make sure that we recognized the students that were involved and got placed. We had Marissa Gotchenauer on the trumpet, and Claudia Wasaki was the alto sax. They're sophomores. Two, four juniors, Alexis Fredericks played the flute, Mason Suchi on trombone, Autumn Walsh on clarinet, and Connor White on trombone. And then we also had four seniors, Gwen Anderson, bass clarinet, Reagan Kaiser flute, Caitlin McGary flute, and Ksenia Zosnovsky on the trombone. Mr. Neivison was also kind enough to share a Q R code with us that we can actually see the concert or, you know, review the concert, which was really nice. And as I said, having personal experience, both as a student and then watching as an adult in later life, it knocks your socks off. It's, it's crazy. It's amazing. And it's very near and dear to my heart, the music program. So I'd wanna make sure that we give them the recognition that they deserve for being involved in this.
Thank you.
Just one thing to add. I think Saturday at OU Bosse's, we do have two students that are competing for Skills USA in welding.
Well, one is welding, and the other one is in, I believe, animal science.
Oh, animal science. So that's Gavin Rickel and Tori Kaiser. So they'll be traveling to OU Bosse's. It's a regional competition for Skills USA. And I cannot remember the last time we had students participate in Skills USA competition. So that's awesome.
Absolutely. Little school, we do, we do very good things here. Our students are very good at things for a little school. All right, public comment and consent agenda items only. Look at that, my two public comments. All right, moving forward. I will take the motion to approve seven point oh one through ten point oh six.
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Stacy? Second by Nancy. Any discussion on any of the consent agenda items? No discussion? I'll take the vote. Nancy? Kristen? Amador?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. All right. Old business, is there any old business to come before the board? Any new business to come before the board? Board seat petitions are out there. Please to give Stacy hers tonight before she goes home.
I already got it last week.
All right, public comment. I know you guys want to talk about it. Anything at all? Anything at all? Okay. At this time, I will take the motion. Sure.
I was wondering if we're going to be hiring any new music teachers specifically for the chorus, as Mr. Neivison is, I'm not saying it's like stretched thin, but like it would definitely help the music program thrive if we had another music teacher in my field.
I would take that under consideration again. Just talking about what they're cutting from our state aid, that may not be feasible. But it is, and even kind of like to echo what Stacy said, I grew up in a band program. I grew up in a music program. I do understand the value of it. I would love to. But at this time, with just the state aid proposal, might not be feasible.
We'll definitely keep it under the front burner, though, for sure. Entering executive's motion to enter an executive session at six forty-five to discuss the employment history of a particular individual and matters that may lead to discipline for a particular individual and information regarding the investigation of number zero-two-zero-eight, zero, or two-zero-two-three, which would harm the investigation if disclosed at this time. Pardon, majority voted the members of the board entering the executive session. Motion, motion?
Second.
Second, Stacy. Budget workshop will be held next Wednesday, February fourteenth, here at the gym. And our next regular meeting will be Thursday, March fourteenth, six P M, here at the gym. Everybody enjoy the nice sweater that we've been having.
We do not intend to conduct business.
We will not be conducting any business. Thank you.